We request that the exotic snake ordinance be amended to include regulations for private ownership of native and non-native venomous and large constrictors, snakes rather than prohibiting possession. We also request that any other species no longer be considered for addition to the ordinance. Y'all contacted us and asked to be on the agenda today?
Yes, sir.
And I stated to you that we passed this. We're always interested in information.
Yes, sir.
Valid information on anything we do because we think it's -- any decision should be based on information and we want to be informed. And so at this time you may proceed.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to pass out some information about it. My name is Jason Royer. Thank you this morning for allowing me to come speak. My wife Sandra and I, we own Roy Reptiles. We predominantly breed boa constrictors and ball pythons. We've been working on our business for over the last 10 years. We wanted to accelerate our business, so the last four and a half years I've spent time working as a civilian contractor in Iraq. She's also been working overseas as a civilian contractor. For the last year and a half she's been in Iraq as well. We've invested considerable time and money in our business and this ban that's in place would completely destroy that. Our -- my family since the 1950s, we spent around $100,000 on those structures and our family property is something that we just can't sell to try to recoup the money if we had to move out of the county. I graduated from La Verne High School. This is my home. I've been here my whole life and I don't want to have to move, you know, in order to go along with this ban. What we're asking here, and I've got letters also to present from citizens of Wilson County as well as throughout Texas, is to work with us, organizations throughout the reptile community such as United States Association of Reptile Keepers and the Herpeticulture Alliance, they've worked with other states, cities, and counties to put regulations in place because people like myself have been doing it for a lot of years. We do it responsibly and we're not a threat or a danger to invasive species or, you know, the public safety. There are ways to do it responsibly. And I put an example in there of what they did in North Carolina for the state, kind of maybe as like a starting point, what we can do as far as regulations. And organizations are very willing to work with the Commissioner's Court to put something else in place so that I don't have to lose my business as well as other reptile keepers in the county. We don't have to give up animals and their businesses. When I heard about the ban from Iraq, I had to contact a friend of mine to take some of my animals out of the county because some of them had already been added to the ordinance. And it's just like if you had to lose your dog or your horse or something like that, you know, because of a ban that was put in place, you wouldn't want to have to do that. I've been keeping these animals for years and I've been doing it responsibly. Now, I know the concerns for the county are safety to the public and invasive species. And I, rather than me address that, I invited some actual experts from the state who can address it and are much more equipped to do so than myself. And I also, this is some National Weather Service data from Florisville. They're going to go over temperatures and extremes and things like that and I wanted to also present this, you know, so we're not just kind of shooting from the hip. He actually has some data to run off of. But with that, I'd like to invite them to speak if that is -- thank you.
Excuse me, gentlemen.
You don't have a statement there?
Have an honor? Don't have any with me? The no rubber snakes to throw out for effect. My name is David Barker. I live over in Kendall County. I have been studying pythons and boas and states in general for most of my life, for over 43 years. I'm a graduate biologist. I'm a professional herpetologist. I worked in the Dallas Zoo as a supervisor in the Department of Herpetology for 10 years and I worked down at the Glass Porter Zoo in Brownsville as a curator of education for two years. I was the public speaker for the Dallas Zoo for seven years. I taught as an instructor at University of Texas at Arlington for six years. My graduate research is on rattlesnakes, but my main interest all of my life has been on pythons and boas. I came here to tell you a few things about it, but not much. I came here to answer any questions you might have on pythons and boas because it's highly likely that you've been asked to make this decision and you probably didn't have a whole lot of information or experience on which to base it. I have brought, I have published four books, three of them on pythons, and I brought one of them here to give to you guys, to you all. Pardon me? Oh, I meant to say, I meant to say good morning and thank you very much for allowing me the chance to talk to the future folks. I know you guys are busy and I know there's a lot going on. These are, I wasn't as mean as Jason and Clinton and Russell told me. These are stacks of papers that speak to the possibility of boas and pythons becoming introduced into Wilson County or anywhere in Texas for that matter. And not only speak directly to that, because it's not an issue, it never has been an issue. It's not really possible and for variety of reasons, but basically we just don't have good climate. We don't have good places for them to shelter. We don't have the right kind of place for them to survive. And one more thing to give you guys. The papers I just sent?
Yes.
Oh, yeah. I got them. The, these are books on ball pythons. I brought one for each of you. I know you probably didn't want a great book on ball pythons, but you may have a son or a brother or cousin or someone in the family. And if not, I'm sure the local library would be delighted to have a copy of it.
She's raising her hand right now.
I gave the copies to the Kendall County Library and it's the most checked out animal book that they have. This is the fourth book my wife and I wrote. I'll give you this copy, but let me use it just for a moment. The, you don't need to open the book, but I can show you, let me show you something here. This book on ball pythons, and this is one of the animals that Jason is particularly concerned about. This is a life-size picture of a python. There are 53 tacks of pythons. Everyone knows about pythons, but they, what they know is basically usually based on Tarzan movies and Jungle Jim and the movie Anaconda and the, of the 53 types of pythons, there are five or six great big types. Most pythons are just snake-sized snakes. They're not giant snakes. They're not dangerous snakes. In this book is a gallery of photos and to just show some of the types of ball pythons that are, they're being wine bred, like goldfish, like horses, like rabbits for color confirmation, you know, just for desirability and captivity. They're a domestic animal now by all definitions. They are harmless snake. All pythons are non-venomous snakes. Oh, and I should say, and I should add, the snakes that I just showed you, this gallery of photos here, these snakes generated in the United States, breeding projects that generated an income of probably somewhere around a half a billion dollars over the last 20 years in the United States. This is a business. It is a serious business for many people. It's not, it's not an imaginary thing. It's not, and Mr. Royer wants to participate in that business. He's chosen it as a career after he finishes his work overseas. And I know that the, the main issues are of public health, I'm sure, and of environmental concerns. And the most of the papers that I brought you here today, just to look through, this first thing, this first paper in the stack is just copied out of the Herald Tribune and I liked the last thing. It says, "The main thing is that the people said, 'Where are all the snakes?'" Regarding the snake hunt they had with 1,000, 100 people looking for snakes. For a month in Florida, supposedly in an area where there's 100,000 snakes, they found 1,400 people found 50 snakes. There just weren't very many. We're going to read one thing in the stack. This kind of answers most of, my wife and I wrote this in 19, or in 2006, or 2008 when the whole python and the Everglades things came to light. And everything that's happened since then is because of that, that thing. And if you're going to read one thing, this answers a lot of the questions and everything that we predicted in here pretty much has come to pass. I would like to explain the Burmese python in the Everglades phenomenon in a way that I think that you guys as businessmen who run the county can understand. What the government did was they went to a group of about six biologists who were government employees and they said to them, "We want you to investigate whether we have a problem with pythons in the Everglades. There'll be no independent review of your work. There'll be no questioning your work in any way, shape, or form. You may make press releases at your own however you want. And if you decide there's a problem, we'll give you somewhere between $100 million and $300 million." Now, if you said that to someone here in this county working for you, do you think you'd come back and say, "You have a problem?" And that's exactly what happened. These guys have been, they've just run roughshod over it. And you think, "Well, how could that possibly be?" These guys trained in Guam with the Brown Tree Snake Project in Guam. And these guys have done this. So over the last 20 years, they've made about $200 million. When they started 20 years ago, there were power outages and brown tree snakes all over the island. Today, 20 years later, there's power outages and brown tree snakes all over the island still. And they spent over, well over $100 million of your taxpayer dollars, right? Now the government's going to do the same thing with the same guys with pythons in the Everglades. They have just run roughshod over science. The things they've published have been incredibly embarrassing, fraudulent. Some of it is outright lies. And, but there's been no question of what they've done. Now, this paper here is a paper that came out six months ago talking about why pythons can't live anywhere except possibly the Everglades. The last cold snap, they had 90% of the pythons in the Everglades died. And the last snap, cold snap that killed those pythons was nothing like the cold we had here three weeks ago. There were 90% of the animals died in the Everglades in the winter of 2010, 2011. And there were four, three experimental colonies, one in Orlando, one in Gainesville, and one in Aiken, Florida. All of those pythons died in that cold snap. There's pythons or boas will not live. There's no way that they'll live past the first cold snap. Here's a, this is another paper that reviewed the paper. This all started when these guys that were paid by the government to investigate if there's a problem. In 2008, they published a paper that said, "Oh, it's a terrible problem." And this is, "It's a horrible problem. Over a third of the southern United States could be invaded by pythons." And in fact, they're moving north right now at 100 miles an year. Well, that's not been demonstrated to be true. And this is a paper reviewing that paper. This is from some guys at Cornell University, just saying that's total nonsense. They said that all the pythons are from released pets. None of the pythons are from released pets. Hurricane Andrew in 1992 let 900 pythons go from one business. Apparently all of them died because this is a genetic analysis of all of the pythons that have been found in the Everglades, well, the first 150 that were found in the Everglades. And they're all descended from probably one pair of animals. So two of them survived out of 900, but not 900, you know, are running around the countryside down there. Apparently two of them landed on a dyke somewhere out there in this swamp and they were, they were a male and a female and they started breeding and that's what's there now. But the accidental release of, or purposeful release of pets has nothing to do with what's going on down there. This is a review of the mantel paper. They said, "Oh, the pythons are down there. They're eating all the mantles." Two of the authors of the paper, the government paper that said, "Oh, loose pythons have killed 90% of the animals in the Everglades." A month earlier, they published a paper that said, "They did 6,053 nights of trapping for pythons in the Everglades and caught three." And they said, "Our trapping project didn't work because there are too few pythons and too many mammals for them to eat." So the same guys, the same government biologist wrote a paper. One paper says it didn't work because there's too many and the other paper says, "Oh, the mammals are gone because there's, or it didn't work because there's too few." And a month later, they published a paper that said, "Oh, there's no, all the mantles are gone because there's too many pythons." They just absolutely at every turn have, have lied. I mean, but they've got a huge visible vested interest in making sure that everyone in the United States thinks, "Oh, my God, boas and pythons, they may get loose. They're going to run all over the country. They're going to do this and that." They make money. They make money right now doing television shows. All those guys have been on television and been for paid television shows. These other papers are papers my wife and I wrote and they all cover different aspects of reviews and critiques of the, of the work that the government biologists have done. And, you know, if you guys don't want to read them, my feelings won't be hurt. The, the issue of public safety or personal safety when it comes to the largest pythons in the world, particulate pythons, Burmese pythons, Indian pythons, African rock pythons, they have been known to kill people. They have in fact killed people. They have never killed anyone who did not, who was not either the keeper or had a direct, which is like over 90% of the deaths. They average slightly less than one death every other year from a pet python killing its keeper. At the same time, every year, we have 20 deaths a year of children killed by their own dogs. We have 1,600 people die or permanently disabled from falling off their horse. More people in the United States are killed by coconuts falling on them than they are by snakes, even counting venomous snakes. In the United States, you're more likely to die from being, right now, here in Wilson County, you're more likely to die from an elephant attack than a python attack. Every year, so to say, "Well, we're trying to protect people from their own pets" is a weak argument in my opinion. I mean, it's like we have people here in this county with longhorn cattle and exotic game and horses and dogs and vicious dogs.
Excuse me a second.
Yes, sir.
No one said anything about trying to protect anybody from their pets. Our whole thing was for the county and, and we're listening to what you have to say. But on the other hand...
I'll talk about, more to the point.
Right.
Well, the point with environmental concerns is that snakes are terrible invaders. There are only in the world four species of snakes that have established a population somewhere outside their range. And in at least three of those cases, it was done on purpose. There's a little tiny blind snake that's been passed around, lives in flower pots. It's now all over the world, living in gardens and around, it's tropics, it won't be a new part anymore, but they're, they're there in Florida. Water snakes were brought from Flori, have you guys ever heard of Snake King? He was an old snake dealer down in Brownsville, Texas in the 1940s and 50s. He sold snakes to carnivals. And he sold king cobras and boas and rattlesnakes and everything that the carnival could use. And he brought in thousands and thousands of snakes. Well, king cobras eat snakes, so he brought in a bunch of water snakes from Florida and let them go all over Cameron County. And there remains today one population around one Resaca where you can still find Florida water snakes. They're still, but they're fading. They're not going to be there forever, but they have been there for 50, 60 years. And there are two, there are two lakes in California where nobody knows why or how the water snakes are showing up. They probably came in with bait. And these pythons, these pythons come from a hurricane wiped out building and, but the thing, the thing is they wouldn't even make it, the thing that Florida, it's not that Florida has a great climate. That's, that's an important part. Florida has a good climate, well, it's got a marginal climate for the extreme southern tent where a python or a boa could live. The thing, the thing though, that why there's snakes there is there's a 1.5 million acre refuge there that's a big swamp where there's no people, no agricultural equipment, no animals, no domestic animals. One road to get run over on, the rest of it is inaccessible to human beings. It's a perfect place to be any kind of animal. And the Everglades has about 5,000 named plants and animals that are native to the Everglades. There are nearly 3,000 plants and animals that live in the Everglades today that are not native. So over a third of the animals in the Everglades are already are non-invasive. Burmese pythons are just one of them. Burmese pythons are probably not, they're probably faded to fade out eventually, but they're not, they haven't done any damage. You go like, "Oh, they've done this, they've done that." They haven't really done any damage. At this point, could I, could I answer questions? Any kind of questions?
Maybe just to give you a little statement as to where we, we started off with this. It was a 2005 permit on cobras. And watching the news and all as far as what's going on with the pythons and everything, we added that to what was requested as a cobra. And knowing that within Florida, not just in snakes, there's a catfish that can introduce there that moves from one to the other that is propagated and found is a problem. Like we have basically four venomous snakes in our area. And we wouldn't recommend to any entity anywhere else that doesn't have them to import those venomous snakes into their confines. In other words, the rattlesnake, the copperhead, the water poxen, coral. So that's our whole goal. And like I said, our, we're very interested in the information that you have. Anyone else have any questions or comments?
Pythons and boas are, really, they're big snakes. They're just regular snakes. And most of them aren't even big snakes. I mean, there's things like Haitian vine boas that a large adult weighs three ounces.
What is your take on the cobras?
I don't think there's any chance that they could ever establish in this area. There's just no way.
We don't want to even have the opportunity.
No, I understand that. I understand that, but it's, but they're, they're, again, looking at the safety of the issue, there's someone here who goes to keep probably the more firsthand experience than I can, but there's, nobody, no first, no emergency responder, no first responder, no policeman, no fireman, no, no stranger walking down the street. No, nobody has ever been bitten by a venom, an escaped venomous snake. Nobody, ever, never. It's never happened. Right? And it's just like, the people who get bitten by them are the people who have them. And that's not a common thing. But it's never happened that anybody's been...
The climate wouldn't have anything to do with the cobras.
Well, the climate wouldn't have anything to do with a cobra being biting the guy who's feeding a mouse.
Not what I mean, propagating here.
No, they couldn't propagate here. They're tropical animals.
Cobras?
Yeah. No, maybe there's a couple of cobras, there's a, there are, you know, there's one called the Trans Caucasian Cobra, Nayanaya oxyrhina that's up in the temperate area. It might do well here. I've never, I haven't ever seen one.
I guess I watch too many movies, doesn't it? I see them over in the Atlantic parts of the Middle East, you know, with the...
Well, they're in the, they're in the, there are, there's a cobra in Israel. There's a cobra, but it doesn't have a hood. It's just a little black snake about that long. And again, a very, very rare snake. They're not in the United States. The cobra people get the hoods up and has the marking on the back of it's, you know, that's pretty much a Southeast Asian animal or in, that's where they come from. They're also found in India, but you can't take snakes out of India. And they're, that's tropics. They're tropical animals. They won't, they couldn't establish here. And again, you let 900 pythons go and only apparently two of them bred. So it's like if somebody came and let 900 cobras in Wilson County, maybe two would get going and whatever, but I don't know.
I would be talking about the boas and the pythons before the 900.
The 900, they let 900, did I say boas? 900 pythons go in the Everglades. 900 pythons accidentally gotten released by a hurricane and only two apparently bred. Research that was done on the snakes that they found later. But it, my point is that snakes are rocky at establishing themselves in a new area. They're really bad at it. I mean, people have been keeping pet snakes for, you know, in a big way really since the turn of the 20th century. And it's gained in popularity to the point now where it's estimated that there's 11 million American households that have a reptile for a pet and 60% of those households have a pet. Snake, if they have a pet reptile, it's 60% of them are snakes. The, you know, the population of snakes in the, and the average home with a snake has an average of five and a half snakes. I don't know who has the half snake, but the, but I mean, that's, that's 20 or 30 million snakes in captivity in the United States. And they're not released, running around breeding...
As you will agree that they are responsible owners and they're irresponsible owners.
There are responsible owners. And I think one of the things that Jason gave you was a law that supports the responsible owners and offers serious penalties for the irresponsible owners. And there are a lot of ways to get around, rather than just a ban for people that have a legitimate reason to do it. I mean, most people that have, you know, well, I don't know if this is true or not. Most people have snakes, they're pets. They have names and their names are, there's an awful lot of names. Python's named Monty. But they, they're, they, but people like Jason probably doesn't consider his animals pets. He considers it livestock, you know, and it's, he's a responsible businessman, you know, and it's a type of agriculture where you raise animals and you make money. You know, well, actually you don't usually make very much money, but on paper it looks good.
Well, we thank you and let the other gentleman talk and then we'll make all of it before we get to here.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Thank you very much, all of you.
Good morning. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to thank you for the opportunity to give you a little insight on what I have and where. My name is Pete Mimikos. I'm the Vice President of the South Texas Herpetological Association. I own a business called Custom Reptiles and Exotics. I possess permits for the state of Texas for non-native venomous and large constrictors. I have also USDA licenses, which is a federal license, which allows me to keep these dog animals. I was asked to come down today because one of my prime focuses is venomous animals. And one of the things I'd like to do right off the top, and I don't want to bore with statistics, which I can easily do, but I have a display at the rodeo right now. I have a tent which is 70 by 50. I have over 50 venomous snakes, native and non-native. And I would love for anybody in this room to come and see me and see what we do and how they're kept, locked cages and all this stuff. Because we use these for educational purposes. We are the biggest draw at the bird. Hands down. We have lines out the tent. So there is an interest for these animals. I keep venomous snakes. My venomous snakes are kept in locked cages, in a locked room, in a locked house. I'm private property. Nobody has access to my animals. I'm a law-abiding citizen. I have my permits and licenses. I include the protocol necessary for keeping these animals in captivity. And most people who keep venomous snakes do realize that there's a potential here. I can go into cities, even more people die from these things, more people die from dog bites, I can go into all that boring stuff. But the truth of the matter is, I keep these animals. There are hundreds of people in the United States that keep these animals. And then, yes, a person might get bit once in a while, but that is the keeper from the zoo or the private sector. There's always a question, and I believe that a lot of people are led to believe due to TV, reality. I would list like the first few of them, Discovery Channel and Animal Planet. Discovery Channel and Animal Planet have contacted me to supply animals. And they take these animals and they put them in a natural situation and they make it seem like they've discovered this animal in a study unit. I stopped supplying these animals because they were presenting these animals in a light that I was not comfortable with, that this is the deadliest thing. Everybody feel, or people under the notion that a cobra is going to chase you down the street and kill you. Well, my animals, being non-native, have to be kept in temperature-specific cages, humidity, light hours. If they are taken away from that environment, they will not survive. They have to have very specific environments to survive. Forget the breeding aspect, to survive. There's the notion that we, uh, if you are bitten by a non-native snake, you're basically going to die. That's it. There's no help. Well, uh, in nineteen ninety-two, I got bit. You have that many snakes, you get bit. I knew the protocol, the snake went back into its cage. I went to the local hospital. I told them what I was bitten by, which is very important, and I was relocated to a hospital. The doctor, very interesting statistic, Dr. Warren Wetzel, came up to me and wrote fifty-five on my shirt. I thought that was my bed number. He said, no. He goes, you're the fifty-fifth snake bite victim I'm going to treat. And this is quote, "And I haven't lost a customer yet."
How would you?
That's fifty-five venomous snake bites that he treated and nobody died. Well, medical attention. That was in ninety-two. I was bitten by a rhinocerous viper, which would be considered by some of maybe your experts, one of the deadliest animals on the planet. The largest fangs, the most venom injected, and I survived. Now you say, hmm, where did he get bit? My right hand. It's fine. It works just damn, no starch issue. So these notions that people will die immediately from a snake bite, native or non-native, is propaganda. It's not true. We have the means to survive these bites. These animals are kept in a situation that I'm not going to let these get to my family. I'm not going to let these get to the public. They're not going to survive out there anyway. They're valuable animals. So there's no need for me to, uh, moan about, about, you know, oh, it's going to get out, it's going to do this. They're just not going to. I'm not going to allow it. The zoos don't let them get out. I'm not going to let them get out. The public is my most concern to keep them safe. I would also like to, um, you know, I don't want to bore you. I really don't. I don't want to go into this, I want to bore you. But there are people that are keeping these animals responsibly. There's people in this room that keep these animals responsibly. I know that it's not for everybody. This is not something that, look, we, a lot of people raised any snake, the good, the dead snake is the only good snake, kill them all, I understand that. But we need to look at the actual facts. Fifty-five snake bite victims and nobody's died. And that includes cobras, that included the hemotoxins, neurotoxins, native, non-native, Dr. Warren Wetzel. And let me just add this, that happened in New York, in the city, not in the outskirts. Who would think that there would be anti-being for rhinocerous viper in New York City? So I want to thank you all for your time. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them. And, thank you, sir. Once again, thank you.
My name is, uh, Dr. Tim Tristan. Um, I'm down in Corpus Christi, Texas. Uh, I'll give each of you guys my card. Um, give them one of you my card so that if you have any questions that come up after this, you want to contact me, you're more than welcome to, for short, but also want to give you a little background on me. Uh, I'm a veterinarian, uh, down in Corpus Christi, Texas. I was born and raised in Texas. Um, been a veterinarian now for about fourteen years. Moved out to Florida. I've worked in South Florida and the Florida Keys, so I'm familiar with a lot of the problems that, uh, were going on in Florida Everglades and saw some firsthand. Um, the, I'm one of twelve board certified reptile vivian specialists in the country. Um, not very many of us, we're, we're a very, very small group, but very tight knit group. Um, and, uh, I own reptiles myself and treat quite a few at my practice. Um, I've also treated, uh, I work for several zoos, aquariums, and other institutions that own reptiles. So that's kind of a background on me. Uh, I'm going to reiterate very briefly, uh, some of the comments that are already made by, uh, Mr. Royer and Mr. Barker. Um, but I think the biggest thing is that, uh, you know, they've really kind of given you, overloaded you with information. And I think that's, that's a good thing because you guys have now the resources to make the decisions, uh, they're the best decisions for your constituents. Um, the, uh, comments about environment, the pythons and boas could not live here, plain and simple. They could not live here, which is just not the right environment. Um, the, uh, there's a, there's also one other component they did not bring up, and that's the educational component. And I think that's a big one. When you start talking about education and conservation, a lot of our, our future generations, the way they're getting into a lot of this stuff and they're finding out about, you know, wildlife and nature and conservation is by owning some of these pets. So I think there's a big component there that, uh, we can't forget about, and that's the generation, the future generations that are going to be, um, you know, exposed to these things and will have a better appreciation for our environment and our ecosystems. Um, I have a personal interest in that. Um, I just started a wildlife, uh, hospital down in the Corpus Christi area. And so part of the couple of species that I work on are sea turtles, but it's also a Texas tortoise. So I have a personal interest in making sure that we don't have any exotic animals that are coming in that are endangered or native Texas species that we deal with here. So if this was going to be an issue, I'd be the first one to tell you that it's going to be an issue, that it's not going to be an issue. So, uh, as far as the venomous, I'll speak briefly on the, on venomous species. Uh, you guys are very fortunate in the fact that we have San Antonio Zoo right down the, down where, uh, we have, you know, you have good hospitals here in, in the, in the general surrounding areas. And because of that, we have some good resources to turn, reach towards and say, hey, we have some venomous animals. Do you have a supply of venom for this species or this species? It's not really hard to get based on where you guys are located. So you're not out in the bush somewhere in the middle of a, a fertile little country. So it's really a, a good thing, you know, you benefit. So, um, like I said, I'm going to keep my comments short. I want to open up for any, you know, I've had two goals today. One is, you know, clear up any misconceptions or misinformation you guys may have about things. And second, just to offer my services, uh, to you guys if y'all have further questions or anything else, um, either here or outside on the personal level also. So, uh, and I'll kind of leave it at that and leave it open for questions if you guys have anything specific that you need from me or would like to hear from me.
On this booklet of, sir, the one that y'all hand out, where did y'all get those regulations for the certain reptile?
Those are from the state of North Carolina. Uh, United States Association Reptile Keepers, they have lawyers on staff as well as the U.S. Herb Alliance that draft those and they work with, they worked with the state to put that in place.
So other counties do have this or just?
I'm sorry?
Does other counties have the regulations?
Uh, variations of it. Yes, sir, absolutely. And other states as well. Uh, Florida probably has the strictest regulations in place because of, of course, the Burmese python issue down there, but...
And to speak to that probably, and, and he's bringing up very good, like, Florida ha- we don't agree that Florida's already been through a lot of these things before. So it's a, we kind of model things we need to after what they're doing is appropriate for our area. So, you know, the counties are all kind of different. There's no blanket across, but, but yeah, they're, they're fairly similar in their approach and their directives.
Well, we're, is everyone that's going to speak, suppose?
Yes, sir.
We're limited on research.
Of course.
Uh, resources and everything and, uh, I don't know about the rest of the court.
I would like to have time to read it over.
What, what I'd like to do is, like I said, if I was time to read it over, and then submit something on this order to the court.
Yes, sir.
In a legal form that actually protects our citizens and protects you as an owner that we can agree with and, and that will, we may supplement that for what we pass. We, we always encourage all information on anything before we make a decision. We, we, we made this to protect our citizens and if, y'all made a very good presentation today, and, uh, if you will do that. Yes, sir?
I am, I showed up here for this, this hearing. I'm not, I, I know several of these people are not part of that, but one of the things that you had asked, and he would be able to allude to this, is the fact of what about some of these cobras getting loose and establishing here? And you brought up the fact that, yes, some can come from a dry, arid area. One of the problems you have with those types of animals being established is, one, for a lot of the tropical species, it's just too cold, they're not going to make it. Secondly, when you get into some of these species that are from extremely arid, dry area, the humidity's too high here. It, it starts to cause all kinds of respiratory infections and different things like that. And he can probably answer those questions for you much, much better about the, they're just, it's not advantageous when you start removing things and overcome, just like we had with, uh, a lot of, uh, I used to breed deer, had scientific breeding purpose of deer breeding and all these northern species of deer, guess what? They get all the cattle on us. So we had none of the problems. The snakes experience the same thing.
Okay. This can of worms and I certainly didn't mean to, uh, get in anybody's face about this. I want us all to be protected. I mean, this guy walks in my office and holds an iPod out and says, hey, look what I bought. Forty bucks. I said, it's a, it's a monocle python. I mean, a monocle, uh, cobra. And, and you're, you know, why? You have two little boys. This doesn't make sense to me. You know, and, and is, is your, is your home clearly marked that you own venomous snakes? Do you have any signs?
Oh, they're just marked with cameras.
No, does USDA require you to have a notice?
No.
Okay. See, that's the problem. You know, you guys talk about...
USDA is not going to require him to have, uh, any kind of signage.
Oh, you referred to USDA? Well, maybe that's what we need to consider if we're going to allow people to continue to do this in Wilson County. You see, wait a minute. As a veterinarian, you and I are both veterinarians.
Yes, we are.
Our profession started because we'd go to farms and ranches to make sure that you had a wholesome food supply and it was to protect the public. Today it's different. This guy shows me a monocle cobra and it's next door to somebody's house because he's in an addition. Oh, well, his is in a lock box in a locked tool shed. But, I mean, we've all are accustomed with the Texas twister. That tool shed could be spread across your backyard in about fifteen seconds. And then you've got a cobra that's mad. Now, how, you, I don't care about survivability and I can argue your point because in, uh, two thousand and eleven in July, Wilson County News recorded on killing a, was it a python? At Kai Castor Creek, which is just right up from my house.
I read, I saw the news article, but it was in Albino. Somebody's escaped that.
Still ate a goat, a dog, and it was a chicken.
As far as dangerous animals go, then I think you bring up some very good points and very valid points there, but I think you can say the same thing about pit bulls, about, uh...
Okay. Well, we're, we're talking about snakes today. I just want you guys to know where I'm coming from.
Is that something going in the chicken house and eating some chickens any different than someone's dog getting in the chicken house and killing some chickens? Is there any difference?
We're talking about snakes. Go ahead.
Okay. Um, yeah, but my, my point about bringing up those other animals, dogs, horses and other things like that, is that, you know, there, there are going to be very dangerous animals. There needs to be some regulations, I understand that.
There we go.
There need to be, uh, responsible ownership, but we need to decide instead of, uh, scaring people into making legislative decisions, we need to educate them. That's what this group has done here today, uh, to, you know, mind myself, I own a pit bull. Uh, there's a, there's a stigma that comes with that, um, but there's responsible ownership.
They're my favorite breed? There you go.
And that's, you know, so you should certainly understand then that the, uh, I don't necessarily need to put up a sign in my house that says, I have a pit bull.
Right.
And, you know, but, you know, there's some, some privacy issues here as well, and I think that's, that's warranted and I think that's something we need to respect from, uh, whether it's a horse or a dog or a monocle cobra.
Well, and let's, just on that, the reason they're my favorite breed because they're so misunderstood, and I think I took them because they were the underdog. They're a fabulous breed, but we're talking about snakes. And we're talking about survivability. This snake had to survive for quite a while till you go, a dog, and then had to go back in and get some chickens. How long, wait a second, how long is, I never interrupted you. I nev- Dr. Barker, I never interrupted you. How long does a snake have to be out that it's dangerous? One hour, kill a child. One hour. And that's what we're here to do is protect the public. That's all I'm trying to do. I, that's cool that you own that and that you own your stuff, but I think you need signage? I mean, if we have a, a Texas twister come through and we have friends that are on the volunteer fire department and they go out there and you've got cobras all spread out in your yard because we had a twister come through? They're not, they're not looking for cobras.
That's actually part of the regulations from North Carolina. Labeling, species labeling.
Excellent.
Yes.
I'm not against you guys. I'm just trying...
Before we go any further, uh, are you a resident of the county or somewhere else?
Oh, I'm Kendall County, sir.
Kendall County?
Yes, sir.
Uh, would you and Dr. Hill get together with these regulations and see if y'all can agree on what protects everyone?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
And, and then come, put it back on the agenda and come back and, uh, I think both of you reasonable people, you can look at it. If we're protected, that's all we want. If we're not, then we need to do something else.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Just, once y'all reach, y'all, y'all exchange information.
Sure.
Once you reach some kind of agreement or impacts, whatever it might be, put it back on the agenda and we'll discuss it and see what we go.
On the last note, I was just thinking about the public. Now, I, I don't want to attack you guys. I'm going to try to talk one of these guys out of your, their book.